I'd like to call to order the October 11th, 2011 meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Rozanski is currently absent.
Thank you. Clarification items, Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, I think it's 13, the meter reading one. I think it's 95 cents a meter. Are those being read visually, someone going to the house and reading the meter?
Yes, that's visually, that's the contract operator, or even the city staff that was comparable priced, but that 95 cents per meter is the contract of visually read the meter.
Okay. And are there automated systems out there? Are we going to transition to that way of doing things, or kind of maybe give us sort of a picture of the future?
Yeah, the automated meter reading that we currently have is for all commercial accounts and meters that are two-inch and larger. They're quite costly. It adds about another $100 per meter if you were to do it for residential, so it's not cost-effective yet.
Okay.
But yes, we are converting all of our large commercial to automated.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Curry?
Hello?
And Councilmember Selich?
Usually I try and get these things answered before the meeting, but, and I don't see Chris here, so Dave, I don't know if you can answer this. Oh, is he? Oh, great. I've got some questions on item number six, the agreement with the Port of Long Beach. I'm confused on all of the cubic yards here, because your letter in June says 150,000 cubic yards plus 15 percent, which takes it up to 165,000 is what we're allowed to have, and, but you're talking about reducing it to 100,000 cubic yards, but then in the MOU, you're now saying it's 85,000 cubic yards, and now we're asking for, this is on Exhibit A on the third-party planned film memo, you're asking for up to 215,000 cubic yards, but then there's a different number in the MOU, so I'm confused on all the cubic yards, and then I don't understand this one term in here. I understand the 10 percent, but then you talk about a number of places it refers to OD included or not included, so, and there seems to be different volumes associated with that, so, can you maybe clarify that?
Sure.
You tried to?
My name's Chris Miller, Harbor Resources Manager, and I can clarify that, but realizing it's confusing. When we originally applied for the Rhine Channel for Port of Long Beach, it was 150,000 cubic yards plus or minus 10 percent. So that's 165,000 cubic yards. We don't need to use all that 165,000 cubic yards. We're only up to about 80, 85 for the Rhine, so we overestimate it. So we have a buffer zone of that difference, and now in the Lower Bay project, we've identified about 130,000 cubic yards. And remember that all these different figures of cubic yards are somewhat with a grain of salt. They're accurate, but there's a little bit of a factor in there. So we have 130 in the Lower Bay, we have leftover 50 or so from the Rhine Channel, credit, if you might, and then whatever's left over there is what we're asking for from the port. So that's a hard way of saying it, but we're covered for the 130,000 cubic yards that we need for the Lower Bay. I guess that's the bottom line.
Okay, and that takes care of all of the unsuitable material, as we talked about at the Tylands Committee meeting, down to the design depth of all areas of the harbor?
Down to the authorized depths for those certain, for those particular areas that we've identified in some areas. It doesn't take us down to authorized depth everywhere, but we're balancing it between cost and sediment chemistry and suitable and unsuitable.
Are we going to have anywhere in the harbor where we're still going to have unsuitable material that hasn't been dredged down to the design depth?
Yes, yes. The harbor, this project is not designed to get the harbor to a totally clean bottom. What we're doing is we're taking off the humps, as I like to say, the unsuitable and suitable material, and, but there'll still be some unsuitable material on the bottom floor, and it won't be at authorized depth, but we're limited by the funding.
Chris, though, are we limited too by what the port would accept? Weren't we going to try to put as much as the port would accept this round?
That's true, and thank you very much. You know, 130,000 was a good number that we felt comfortable asking the port for, and they felt comfortable giving to us. This guy wasn't the limit with the port, because they have a cap on how much they can accept, so that's a better answer. Thank you, Dave.
So as you're doing this dredging, when you did the Rhine Channel, you started out estimating 100,000, 150,000, it's now down to 80, 85,000. So as you do this next phase, as you're estimating, if you come up that you're not going to use as much material in Long Beach as you think, are we going to be able to go to those other areas that are still left and take that material and take it up to Long Beach?
Yes, if we have, we can easily do a change order for the contractor at that time, and we would just need some extra funding for that.
So money will solve that problem?
Yes, it will. So in our pot of cubic yardage, we'll still have that final big number. How we achieve that is really, comes down to funds. And then OD, your second question, OD means overdredge, and so you have the dredge where the contractor is meant to dredge, then you have usually one or two feet of overdredge, which is paid. The contractor may or may not choose to go down here. They usually do, because it's paid cubic yardage, but it's a buffer zone, because dredging is not an exact science or exact construction technique.
Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Hill?
I do have a few items for clarification. On item number three, I noticed in the staff description that the parking was going to be permanently allocated, not allocated, but reserved on Sundays as no parking except for permitted vehicles, and yet in the resolution, the language of except for permitted vehicles is not included, and so I'm wondering if that's what the intent is there.
Councilman Hill, we appreciate you catching that. You know, it's funny how we read this many times and we don't see it, but you saw it. So we are going to add time, we're going to, we modified that resolution to add the following. The vehicle parking prohibition shall not apply to any vehicle displaying a valid City of Newport Beach issued Lido Marina Village Farmer's Market permit, parking permit, so thank you for catching that.
My next item is on item number five, the seismic retrofit, and possibly this is more of a philosophical question, but I noticed that, I guess I use as the benchmark Oasis and the Civic Center, that those projects are being managed by construction management or were. Those projects are very much under control, they're on budget or under budget in the case of Oasis, and on schedule, and on these other miscellaneous projects, we constantly see them coming in with all kinds of change orders associated with them. And in this particular one, one of the larger being 11 percent over the budget, and it was acknowledged that these were resulting from design changes during construction to account for unanticipated existing conditions. And so when I read that, and then I looked at the identification of the items about providing a changeable message sign and additional rebar for an approach slab, these did not sound like unknown conditions. They either sounded like changes in the scope, or it sounded like that the consultants weren't going out and doing their homework before they were doing the designs. And so with that, two levels of questions. Number one, are we, when we contract with these individuals, are we ensuring that they go out and really study what they're looking to modify, so that they know those existing conditions to the extent that that's possible without extensive demolition to determine different things? Number one. And then number two, when we're completing a project, are we ensuring that we have a good set of as-built drawings, so that we don't repeat the condition the next time we need to go back and modify that once again? So I apologize, but that's two different questions as it relates to this, if we'd like to comment on that.
Sure, Council and Councilman Hill, I think what we're seeing here, you know, when you're dealing with rather old structures, we do kind of get into a situation where we think that our designers have done the best they can, but unfortunately, some of the work that we uncover, we find things that weren't as they were originally designed. Case in point for the bridges in Jamboree. One would normally assume that they'd have proper clearance between the edge of the form and the rebar on the bridge. Well, when you start chipping away this fall, you find out, wow, that's a lot closer than it should be, so you have to chip it back a little farther and that kind of thing. So we end up chasing some things that maybe there were some mistakes made early on when those bridges were originally built. Maybe everything wasn't fully documented. I don't, you know, I'm not, I can't speculate how that got to be, but we do find things that aren't appropriate, or things that maybe weren't built exactly the way they should have been. Maybe that's contributing to why we have some of the failures that we have. So I think in that case, in the case of the changeable message sign, I think it was just a, you know, kind of an additional supplemental idea to, you know, improve our information to the public. Yes, we probably should have thought of that earlier, but I think once the project gets going, sometimes you don't catch all of those things, and you realize, wow, you know, we can do better here. And unfortunately, we had to add that in, but if we had added that in the process in the project originally, you know, that cost is probably going to be included in the bid numbers anyway, so it probably is a little bit of a premium, because we're adding it on, and we understand that, and we'll strive to do better.
How about the as-built questions, Steve, about keeping as-built?
Yeah, I think, you know, we have, we've hired some real good folks on our, you know, on our bridge projects, certainly on our new Jamboree Road widening project that we're doing right now over the 73 freeway. We've got some, you know, real good people on board. We'll definitely have some better documentation. I think, you know, in the old days, you used to have to get out the old pen and ink and start drawing it up, and I think a lot of times that took a lot of effort, and people just said, ah, whatever. The plans got rolled up and thrown in a box, and ultimately, they disappeared or were destroyed. I think we're a lot better at documenting changes in construction now with electronics. We have our architects and engineers fully involved in that process, too, and they're looking over their shoulders. So I think, to answer your question, I think we are doing a better job now than we have ever done, so I'm hoping that problem is not going to happen in the future.
And I guess going on to item number nine, if you will, it's almost the same question. Item number nine, we talk about due to the complex nature of the bridge structure and unforeseen existing conditions, the design is being modified to, you know, blah, 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 and then you acknowledge that there's a lot of RFIs. Well, RFIs, to me, are often because the drawings are not clear and understandable, and then you turn around and say that the consultant is uniquely qualified to provide these services, because they were the engineer of record on the design of the initial structure. And that, to me, is an open circle. And so I guess my message is, and what you just said resonates very well with me, the technology today is so much better to have record drawings, but I guess my message through talking about five and nine, of which I'm total support of both of them, is to ensure that the city, as it moves forward on its projects and its contracting, makes a concentrated effort to ensure that we have good as-built drawings, and that our inspection process makes sure on the critical items that we're inspecting to see that the buildings are being built in the manner in which they are being designed. I'm sorry to take up so much time, but now I'm going to jump to item number 14. That's the American Legion dredging. Once again, I'm in total support. I just recognize that I see a difference between the staff report and the letter agreements going back and forth, that the staff report says that we would not be dealing with the seawall until after seven years, and both letters that go back and forth say that the seawall is sometimes within the next seven years. Do we have a reconciliation of that?
Thank you for catching that. What we meant to say, what I meant to say, was it would be within seven years. I should have, I should have double-checked my language there. So that could mean anywhere from a few years up to seven years. We'd like to take a look at that, and we'll put that in our plans in the coming years.
So the reconciliation is that the letters are correct and the staff, okay, very good.
Could I follow up on that, because that was also one of my questions? We're acting like the, this, the seven-year period is an exchange. Well, what was our earlier plan? What's the benefit to us? It seems like it's, we're giving the money and we're also doing the seawalls, so...
Well, the benefit to us is to not have to do the seawalls right away.
Were we planning on doing the seawalls right away?
No, but, well, hold on. If the American Legion facility was dredged up to the seawalls as they requested, and arguably as it's needed to be dredged, we would have had to redo those seawalls right away. So what this compromise was, we're not going to dredge the entirety of their marina, we're going to split the costs, and we don't have to do the seawalls for up to seven years. So we are getting...
But we also weren't obliged to dredge the whole marina anyway, were we?
We were not obliged to dredge the whole marina anyway, but we were obliged to replace the seawalls. So if they went ahead and did a dredging project all by themselves, they would have come knocking on our door saying, you got to fix the seawalls, and you got to do it now. So this is the grand compromise.
Let's think about that one.
Any idea what that seawall project's going to cost us?
Well, let's see, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but it would be, one solution in the next seven years would be to redo the cap and the tie rods. Off the top of my head, somewhere in the seven or eight hundred thousand dollar range, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
I think that's about it.
So it's about 10 percent, so what the ultimate project will cost? What if we did it today?
Yeah, it's really, I think, the goal of the city staff with the Tylands Management Committee, do a real comprehensive evaluation of what seawalls we have the responsibility to repair, and I wanted to plug that into that discussion rather than have to do this earlier.
That it? Well, one final one, and that's number 16. My understanding in reading the minutes from the Planning Commission and the staff report, that the Planning Commission on the 36 versus 24-inch box trees, the first time they heard that, I think it was February 1, that they did not agree with going to the larger tree because of the cost associated with it. And yet, what's missing, I guess, I assume then during an August 2 meeting, they reversed that decision, and now they're recommending to the city council that the larger tree be used?
That's correct, except it wasn't the Planning Commission, it was Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission.
I'm sorry.
But that's correct. On August 2nd, they voted unanimously to come forward to council.
And so they did something within their analysis to reverse their decision?
Oh, yeah, and I think we had two new commissioners, and that helped. They sided with this change.
All right. Thank you.
That it?
That's it.
Councilmember Rozanski, clarification items?
Nothing, thank you.
Council, excuse me, Mayor Protem Gardner?
Number 10, the new system for the police department. Do we have any idea of its longevity? I mean, I know that technology changes all the time, but do we have some kind of guess about when we want to be replacing this one?
Sure. Good afternoon. Lieutenant John Lewis with your police department, and we project the system at a minimum to last us a solid five years, and we're hopeful that it'll last us 10 into the future. The system we have now, we purchased in 2004, and we're, the technology still handles our needs at a base level, there's, but where we're starting to fail is with the equipment itself that's actually getting old. Now, this system that we're talking about going to is something that's, from the prior generation we had, is just a simple DVD base, like you would stick into your DVD player at home. This is a computer server-based application where all of our storage is computer-based versus the actual digital media that we have in our current system. So we anticipate this system to last longer than the one that we have. We expect that it's going to perform better, and hopefully more efficiently than the one we currently have.
Can I ask a question, by the way? When we replace our police cars, do we take this equipment out and then put it into the new cars we buy?
That's exactly what we do. We retain this hardware, and we're able to repurpose it.
And with the demise of the legendary Crown Victoria, we're confident it will fit in whatever we replace it with?
It is. This is actually, we're going from, and many of you've seen in the back of the police cars, where we have a console or a DVD player that's about this big, we're going to a flash drive that's about this big. So it's significant. We gained some real estate in our trunks, which is, quite frankly, very important to us, and also gives us the ability to transition into newer generations of vehicles.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a clarification item. See if we can just complete the set here. On item number eight, these are the Rule 28 funds that we are acquiring, and it was a bit confusing reading the report. We're acquiring these funds at 50 cents on the dollar, that makes sense, and we're getting some more capacity to do Rule 28, 28A projects, but then we're borrowed ahead on some, and this creates more, and then, but we can borrow ahead and do more. What I'd like to do is just get a little bit more clarity on how much additional capacity this actually creates, whether it's borrowed or paid for, to do more projects and when, and what kinds of projects we can use it for.
I'm asking Dave to come up, because he knows the exact numbers. I think he's got them memorized, but...
Now, remember, this is a clarification, Dave.
I'll keep it short, then. Clarifying. The whole goal here was to get some additional money at a good rate and pay down our loan. We're borrowed ahead, as we mentioned, and Southern California Edison allows you to borrow to future dollars to build projects, so right now we're leveraging, and I don't have the report, but I think it was four million or something. Steve will get that, but the goal is, we can, as soon as we can pay some of that off and maybe get next year, is then there's some capacity there. I think we free about 400,000 to start looking at the next Rule 28 project. And those projects are typically on arterial highways, they have some qualifications, if it's a scenic area or recreation, you might be able to do it. That would be undergrounding areas like Balboa Boulevard, Superior Avenue. Those types of streets would be Rule 28, and that's where the utility pays 100 percent of that cost. They design it and take ratepayer money that's been set aside that we get to do the project.
All right, and so we're talking about roughly $400,000 of additional project capacity beginning roughly in 2016? Is that what the report said?
Yeah.
If we wanted to re-borrow ahead...
That's correct.
...to do work?
Correct.
Okay. And this would not be on, with regard to private property like the undergrounding assessment districts? This is all public right-of-way kind of work?
Correct. That is Rule 20B, where we do underground districts in the people fund, that this would be actually just arterials and it's money that you have discretion to do within certain guidelines and the utility funds it.
And so do you have in mind which arterials you would prioritize highest on this?
I think it's worthy of a discussion down the road, and we can bring that back. I do know, from way back when I first got here, there was a line on Superior, Balboa, San Joaquin, we have some others that are probably identified, but it might be worthy of council to look at that as we come up to, able to do another project, to say, what are your priorities? I would warn you, like Balboa's going to be a very expensive project, if you want to take that on, for instance, talking in the millions, we'd have to save up some more, find some more money. We did work with Mission Viejo, and they're open to the idea of buying additional credits as they come available for 50 cents on the dollar, so maybe we can accumulate enough money sooner to do something like that.
Councilmember Selich?
Yeah, I thought we had a, for the 28 projects, I thought the council had adopted a number of projects and streets and had a priority already set up. Am I misremembering?
Yeah, I think we do have a priority, and I think the, but I think that's something the council probably wants to revisit. I think the next one on the list was Superior. I think then...
Okay.
It might have been, and then San Joaquin and Balboa. I'm not sure of the exact order, but there is a list, and we can, you know, we were thinking that we would bring that back to you at some point. Of course, you know, we've got some time. At some point, the council may want to revisit that list and decide which, you know, priorities have changed and what the desires are of the council.
Okay.
Actually, just to follow up on your question, because I thought I understood it a little bit differently about the mortgaging. We can't use the 400,000 in capacity today if we wanted to?
You could, but that's a very small project. It doesn't get you very far.
Okay, but we don't have to wait till 2016 to start using money, or re-borrowing money that we paid back over the next year or two, let's say?
Correct. It depends on the size of the project. Let's say we take Superior, and let's say it's a million dollars. So in a couple of years, we'll have enough money to do that. We'll still be mortgaged out a certain amount of years, but we could take on the project.
What the mayor said was that we couldn't spend it until 2016, and you said yes, and I didn't think that was my understanding of it.
No, I apologize.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for clarification items, then let's proceed to current business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember, the councilmembers. The next presentation is by Dr. Charles Moore of the Algalita Marine Research Foundation. This is, was an invitation that, actually, Councilmember Daigle extended through staff to Dr. Moore to make this presentation. It's one that some of you may have heard a while back, but it has been a while, and I know Dr. Moore is out there a lot doing this research, so I think folks will enjoy the update. And with that, I'll introduce Dr. Charles Moore.
Thank you. Can we dim the light just a bit? It's a little...
We will.
...out there. This program's designed to attempt an answer to the question, is it possible that our plastic waste is affecting a global system as immense as the world ocean in a fundamental way? First, a little oceanography. Between the snowbirds and the sun worshippers, there's a transition zone, and it's not like here on the coast where we have a mountain range separating where we have the marine layer versus the desert. In the ocean, it's a kind of a movable system. You're in a liquid, so the transition zone is variable, but it's where the action is. These currents sweep past one another. The low-pressure systems in the Gulf of Alaska sweep past the high-pressure systems in the North Pacific subtropical gyre, and they stir up the water. We know that when water gets stirred up by the coast, we have these algal blooms, these red tides, but there's no stirring up the bottom of the deep ocean. You just stir up these slabs of water out there with these currents, and it makes a rich environment. It also happens to be where the nutrients provide sustenance for basic members of the food web, and one of them is the flying squid. Now, you've heard of flying fish, probably none of you have seen flying squid, but in the mornings on our ship out in this area, we picked up plenty of them that have flown onto the deck during the night, and there's so many of them that it became a fishery, such that an area roughly the size of the United States was mined down to 30 feet deep for flying squid in the early 1990s. And a local marine consultancy, the MBC Applied Environmental Sciences, their scientists studied the records of these trawls that pulled up so many of these animals, and they looked at 390,000 records. And what I've done here is superimposed the flying squid fishery over what NOAA has now drawn as the convergent zone for our trash. The eastern garbage patch is the red blush on the right, the red blush on the left is the western garbage patch, and this convergent zone is sort of a highway between them that has waste accumulation potential. These high-pressure systems are accumulators of trash. And I want you to pay attention to this movement here past Cabo San Lucas and the turn that the current makes out here. That'll become relevant a little later on. And the overlap here is what concerns me. The scientists at MBC studied the records of the observers onboard that were there to see what was caught in addition to the flying squid. This is one of the reasons the United Nations, through the International Maritime Organization, banned the use of these drift nets, because so many other... banned the use of these drift nets because so many other creatures were being taken, known as bycatch, along with the flying squid. Tunas, salmon, yellowtail, you name it. But, there were no reef fish. Now, these are, this is the area that I've surveyed. Every one of those docks is a place where I've taken a net and trawled it out there along the surface of the ocean. And, every one of my trawls has produced trash. This is a typical trawl over a mile out in the North Pacific. And, it's what I'm referring to as a plastic soup. These pieces don't just stay large like this. They break into smaller and smaller bits. But, when they are large, they produce a phenomenon, which is that they become a new habitat. They're growing coral. This is coral growing on this plastic fishing float, this derelict float. There's a caulking tube right there that has a fish living in it out in this zone. And, what we're seeing is that not only is it habitat, it's being consumed. These triggerfish are very good at eating these soap bottles and other bits of plastic that are out there. And, so, now what we've got out there, I, after looking thoroughly through these records that MBC studied, finding no reef fish and realizing, when I'm out there now doing these samples, taking that sample from the area that overlaps this zone, I'm finding reef fish. This is the scribbled filefish you may have seen in trips to Hawaii doing snorkeling along the reef. You read an ichthyology textbook, it's going to tell you these fish stop having habitat at 120 meters depth. This one was taken at 3,000 meters depth. Why? Because the habitat suitable for this fish now exists on the surface of the ocean as coral growing on trash. And, it's enough coral growing on trash now to have a significant population of reef fish in the middle of the ocean. The new coral reef is in the middle of the ocean. I mean, what would a lion-weight predator like a frogfish that can change colors be doing in the ocean? In the deep ocean, fish are blue on top so that when a predator looks down, they don't see them in the blue of the deep. And, they're light on the bottom, so when a predator looks up, they don't see them because they're hidden in the lightness of the sky above. And, those are the two colors that fish have in the deep ocean. Here, you have a lion-weight predator. There's no place to hide typically in the deep ocean until we introduced our plastic waste. And, so, now they have, these two were taken out in the middle of the gyre. One's yellow and mottled and the other's black probably by hanging out near one of those fishing floats that was black. The other one probably by a colorful fishing net. And, they can lie and wait and be predators now because they have substrate. They have habitat. We wonder how Ziploc baggies can get out there and become food and black plastic trash bags. And, I think what happens is, you know, we're having issues on our beaches now with styrofoam blowing onto the shore and plastic bottles blowing on the shore. These are things that have some windage. They float on the surface of the ocean so that our prevailing winds, being onshore winds, the westerlies, push things back onto shore that have some windage, that float and have an appendage above the surface of the ocean. But, as these baggies and trash bags flow down our rivers to the sea, they get mixed with bits and sediment, grains of sand. And, just a few grains of sand, a few bits of sediment is enough to make these things neutrally buoyant and to make them settle into the water column. So, they're not affected by these onshore winds. They're trapped by those currents that I referred to that take them out past Cabo San Lucas, down below Hawaii, and then circle back up into the gyre and become habitat. This is fish habitat. This is a soap bottle where fish can hide. Anything in the ocean becomes a place where fish can hide. This is affordable housing for fish. It's a crate that may have had oil jugs in it on a fishing boat. After they threw with them, they threw the crate overboard and now it's inhabited. And, there's more than just fish in there. There's crabs, there's anemones, there's moss. That's food. It's become an environment. It's become like our rocky intertidal habitat or coral reef habitat. These crates of fish are sanctuaries. These fish don't want to leave. We dove in, pulled this crate over to the boat and you'd think the fish would jump out. No, they just circle closer together inside that crate. That crate has kept them safe since they were babies. They're very happy in there. They've got everything they need. So, when we lift it up on deck and you can see the coral starting to grow in it, they just come right up with it. But, those particular fish, the rainbow runner, are related to yellowtail, members of the jack family. And, this particular one had consumed quite a bit of plastic. A problem, since plastic is lipophilic, meaning oil-loving, and the sea-surface microlayer where these plastics float is oily and it's distilled the pollutants from industrial civilization into that sea-surface microlayer where these pellets soak it up. When we have an oil spill like the Exxon Valdez or the Deepwater Horizon, those booms you see out there are expanded polypropylene, the same material that you have on your bottle of water. So, we're talking new habitat. The deep ocean, 40% by the way of the world ocean are these subtropical gyres, is now becoming populated with fish that heretofore never could have survived out there for any length of time. They're now permanently part of that system. We have all these buoys from the fishing industry and I won't be able to show you the video associated with this, but these were always a mystery, why we found these giant green buoys and these black buoys are the most common out there. It turns out, it's the Korean sea urchin fishery. So, that when a, one of these so-called bombs comes out of Siberia and stirs up the ocean, these things are released en masse and begin to populate the deep ocean. This was a video that would have shown you miles and miles of these buoys in the Korean sea urchin fishery. We find the remnants of them in these windrows. This is a windrow of plankton and on the sides of it is where we find the denser objects, the things like our plastic trash. And, this is what we call a day's catch. Standing on the bow, going along one of those windrows, this is the typical production that we can get using just a dip net and pulling stuff up that we see floating in the ocean. And, right here is coral growing on the inside of that basket often used by fishermen to sort their cat. The instrument that we use to sample the deep ocean, where each one of those little dots in the previous map was taken, was the use of this manateau. It's like a man array, which is a ray that sieves the ocean for plankton. This is kind of a similar situation, sieving the ocean for plankton. It's just that now, when we do it, we find more plastic than plankton in a large number of our samples. We found that these lanternfish, the most common fish in the ocean, something probably you didn't realize, being in a coastal town which has a long history of commercial fishery with the Newport Doryman, using anchovies for bait and sardines for bait. But, actually, the most common fish in the ocean are these lanternfish. As a matter of fact, if you total up the mass of all the fish species in the ocean, it's less than the mass of this one order of fishes, the lanternfish. This is the food source for most of the fish in the ocean. They have these little lanterns on them and big eyes because they live their entire life in darkness. That orange eye right there is what we see on the surface at night. And, we watched these things feeding frantically and we caught 670 of them out there, necropsied them, opened up their little stomachs, and that's a little piece of plastic in one. Here's the mouth you see bigger than the anus, so you can't pass something like that. That broke when we took it out. But, this is the plastic part. This is the natural part. This is a pre-production plastic pellet, the so-called nurdle. And, this is the record holder. A fish is about as big as your middle finger with 84 pieces of plastic in its stomach, far outweighing that and the natural food. And, this is floatables. This is stuff that has no nutritional value, is non-digestible, and will resist the fish's migration. This is the largest migration of biomass on Earth and it happens on a daily basis. From a mile deep, these fish come to feed frantically at the surface. And, that's why they're so successful, why they are more than half the fish biomass in the ocean, because they're hard to catch. You can't see them. It's nighttime. But, in the, by the same token, they can't see what they're eating. And, this color distribution is about the same color distribution we get in one of those samples like I showed in the jars there. So, my position is, we've got to add plastic to these trophic diagrams. It's both predator, it tangles and kills, and it's prey. It's food. And, science has yet to add that to the census of marine life. That's the reason for that diatribe there. Now, we'd like to know how these objects move and this was a diagram that had a movie attached with it that showed these things moving out into the North Pacific gyre. But, I'm going to skip that because we're not doing it. And, this would show the tsunami debris. But, basically, the two things that you saw, this eastern garbage patch, the western garbage patch, and that NOAA diagram, if you start this stuff here, in about three years, it's hitting over here. So, we can expect, you know, three years from the time of the tsunami, we're going to start having some nice Japanese homes on our beach coming perhaps north of us. We don't get, the Oregon coast is a lot more littered than our coast because that's the way the currents work. And, the Chinese, when we think about recycling, we think, "Well, that's the way to get us out of this mess." But, we just don't have enough to recycle of the same type of plastic. This is, obviously, these guys are pulling out what they think there's a market for and they're going after the thin plastic films. The bags, they're pulling them out, but all this other stuff is on its way to the ocean to populate those gyres. And, this is what ends up in Hawaii. The bags have been consumed already and it's mostly all hard plastics that we find over on the southernmost beach in the United States near South Point on the big island, Camilo Beach. There's 410 golf balls in that picture that I got out of a crevasse in the reef right out here. This is just the morning's trawl from the golf course around the corner where President Obama stays, Kailua Beach. This is Kahuku Beach Golf Course Beach on Oahu. So, it's not just isolated places that are impacted now, it's the tourist islands. But, this is the most isolated of the Hawaiian Islands. This is Kiri Atoll and this is Cynthia Vanderlip steward of that Atoll with her daughter and they're wearing these, what we thought were hagfish traps. But, Korean TV came and did a special on this issue and did some research and we found that they're actually the Korean eel fishery that drops these things off and allows them to get away because aquaculture is such a huge business. This movie would have shown you miles and miles of these traps being deployed. The point being that after they accidentally break away and leave Asia, they don't litter Asian beaches. The offshore winds and offshore currents pull the stuff out into that westerly flow that, when we say westerly winds, we means winds blowing from the west to the east. So, they're pushing from Asia to the coast of the United States. And, this is Cape Blanco, Oregon. So, now, the kind of pollution that we had seen before only in Hawaiian beaches, we're now starting to see on the beaches of the Oregon coast. These enormous wide sandy beaches are now turning to plastic sand. This is from Camilo Beach. This is the new sand of the Pacific Islands. Instead of being coral and volcanic rock and shell as the material that's ground down to be sand, we now have our plastic trash being one of those feedstocks for sandy beaches. These are the five gyres and I brought a sample from each one. Our foundation has now sampled the South Atlantic gyre, the North Atlantic gyre, the South Pacific gyre, the North Pacific gyre, and the Indian Ocean gyre. And, we found all of them to be similarly polluted with plastic. As a matter of fact, we just had Terra expeditions give us samples from Antarctica here and found them, each and every one, to have plastic. And, it's penetrated the circumpolar current around Antarctica. Dr. Marcus Erickson and his wife, Anna Cummins, have started the Five Gyres Institute to investigate these phenomena. There again, fish and plastic becoming part of the food web and accumulating pollutants, transferring them up the food chain, windrows of debris. And, it does, as I say, they're 40% of the world ocean. So, that's equivalent to the land area of Earth itself. So, the places that are sea fills for our trash are equal in area to the landmass of the Earth itself. And, this is underwater in the Mediterranean. Mediterranean's not a gyre, but it doesn't need to be to accumulate trash because there's no output. It's just the straits of Gibraltar. So, the bottom of the Med is about as polluted as any bottom of any ocean. And, my colleague, Dr. Galgani at the equivalent of NOAA in France, has an underwater vehicle that took pictures of the bottles on the floor of the Mediterranean. But, we don't have video capability. We sort this stuff out at our lab in the sea lab in Redondo Beach and we find the situation where this 5 millimeter, 2 millimeter, you know, 1 millimeter, half a millimeter, a third of a millimeter stuff, we want to know where's this stuff going? If you break all this stuff up, you'd get a bigger pile of dust than that. And, we think that it's actually becoming part of the food web. These are tiny little salps that have ingested perhaps foam polystyrene. And, they're just the vacuum cleaners of the ocean. They have the capacity to filter half the water column they inhabit every day. They do a great deal of pulsing, those little bands or muscles that pulse water through a hollow tube. And, anything that'll fit in that orifice was historically, evolutionarily speaking, sensible to consume as food. Now, there's non-degradable stuff that is, like these pellets of polystyrene, that I find so, and just, I've got two pie tins out between the floats on my dock where I have my ship the other day, just pulling out between two floats on the dock. So, it's a big, big problem. And, these, again, an aquaculture operation with uncovered foam floats in the oyster aquaculture industry getting away and becoming part of the problem. And, it's not just eating or getting tangled in stuff that's a problem. This is a very common jelly, a by-the-wind sailor, balella balella, and they just bump into stuff. They're gelatinous and the plastics floating on the surface, they're sailing around the surface and they bump into stuff and sticks to them and then their tissue grows around it. So, they become plasticized by our waste without ever doing anything to make that happen except, you know, existing out in the ocean. Again, a rocky intertidal habitat produces what we see in our tide pools, namely sea anemones. We don't expect them growing in the middle of the ocean, but here we have sea anemones growing in the middle of the ocean with, instead of shell decorating their bodies, we have plastic decorating their bodies. And, we believe that the micro-sized particles, as plastic degrades, it must reach the molecular level and then further degrade before it can be consumed and biodegraded. Plastics are greater than 1,000 molecular weight and there's no creatures on Earth that are designed to consume things greater than 1,000 molecular weight. So, these single molecules of plastic are the size that could be consumed by these filter-feeding organisms like sea anemones. And, just little baby pieces like this here are killed by blocking the elimination process in the baby turtles. And, it goes all the way to the top. And, this is our animal. This is the California gray whale. This is the one we saved from having a salt mine built in San Ignacio Lagoon down in Baja, California in order to protect its nesting or nursery habitat. This is what this particular whale had in its stomach. Extremely odd to find a Meistec whale, a whale that feeds by scooping up mud off the bottom of the ocean where 90% of the biomass of the ocean is. Everything that ever lived in the ocean died, went down to the bottom, became rich food for worms at the bottom of the ocean. That's why these whales developed a strategy of eating at the bottom of the ocean. That's where the food is. And, now, it's where the trash is. Again, Dr. Galgani's slide from the bottom of the Mediterranean. It won't be long before plastic bottles and bags become food for our California gray whales. And, so, my message is that we've entered the plastic age in 1979 when plastic production in the United States outstripped the production of steel. And, we haven't, you know, we can have a conversation on the internet about anything we want, but we haven't had the plastic conversation. We haven't talked as a society about where plastic belongs in our civilization and how we're going to handle it, what the infrastructure is necessary to take it back and put it back in the productive sphere. We're doing a very poor job of recycling it. And, it's toxic. We used to believe it was totally inert, but modern research has shown that these small levels have an effect and it leaches small levels. That smell, you smell in the new car smell, that is- That smell, you smell in the new car smell, that is toxic. It has levels of endocrine-disrupting chemicals, carcinogens, mutagens in it that at small levels can make a difference. It used to be the dose makes the poison, the law of paracelsus. Now, the idea is that the timing makes the poison. It's when the baby is developing as a fetus, when these windows are open, these tiny little signals make such a big difference. One drop in 60 tanker cars of a train is enough to have an effect on a baby. We've got to have this conversation. Now, Canada is beginning to take notice. They found bisphenol A to be a toxic substance. Well, that's what's lining the cans of our canned food. That's what's in canned tuna. Every seafood sampled in Singapore had bisphenol A in it, and a similar chemical. It's not, you know, the sushi-eating rat versus the McDonald's-eating rat. These have the same diet, the same exercise, but you give them these chemicals that can create more fat cells, then there's more place to put fat. It makes sense to have an estrogen-like chemical when you're pregnant to put on more fat stores, but it doesn't make sense for the entire population to be exposed to estrogen and estrogenic chemicals and estrogen mimics. So we think part of the global epidemic of diabetes and obesity is due to these chemicals, some of them in plastics. Also, behavior changes happen. Dr. Paolo Palanza in Italy found that rats exposed to these BPA spend more time out of the nest and don't retrieve their babies as often and spend less time nursing. The green triangles are exposed to BPA, so it's less time nursing, more time out of the nest. So behavior changes. You know, you hear about the lady that went to Disney World with her boyfriend and left a box of cereal for her five-year-old in the apartment while she's gone. You're wondering, has she been eating a lot of canned food or drinking out of a BPA sports bottle? You know, what's going on here? And then, you know, the studies that have been done finding that the seafood is contaminated. We've got problems with our seafood. Not only is it disappearing, it's polluted. So, I mean, if there's no exposure here, how are you going to, you know, what, something's going on. Water is a medium for transferring pollutants to bodies. This is something we need to look at. This was a cool thing I got from Dr. Maximeenko over in Hawaii that showed the entire coastline of the world, the populated world, emanating trash and it ending up in those five gyres. So the final diagram would have been that other one with the five gyres, and you would have seen these little dots going off into the ocean, making those five gyres. But we don't have time for that. And so, you know, if Kessler was right, and he proposed this theory in 1979, we get enough trash in outer space, we're not going to be able to have a space program. We're lamenting the loss of our space program, but we may not be able to have one even if we want one. If we start banging into space trash and creating these chain reactions, we'll create this layer of junk that we won't be able to penetrate. It's a lifestyle that has to change. It's not sustainable. We've got to do a better job of handling our waste. We've got to have more than this as our take-back infrastructure for our trash. Thank you. And I'm not going to spend too much time on my politics here, but my basic thrust is that by doing as much as we can to make as much as we can locally, we can eliminate a lot of the packaging that is causing a lot of this problem. And dirty jobs can be fun for a while. Let's start focusing on making our own food, clothing, shelter, and energy, create a regional reliance inventory, just start looking around at our region and see what we can do here locally, and really not globalize this mess. What we're doing is globalizing the tragedy of the commons that we've created by unlimited, ill-planned growth, and it really is time to have a reversal of this trend. So my personal contribution to this is to start an urban farm in the middle of Long Beach, downtown Long Beach, the Gladys Avenue Urban Farm. I take the filaments green algae, the alga from Colorado Lagoon, that grows because there's a golf course next door and because we have the Terminal Avenue Drain Project not completed yet. So the runoff from central Long Beach comes into the Colorado Lagoon, causes these algal blooms. I take the algae, spread it on my farm, till it in, and grow $150 to $200 worth of plants. I don't give up like the folks at Waste Away did and just say, send us your kitchen garbage in the plastic bag, we'll grind it up, treat it with high-pressure steam, and put it out in the soil. I don't think that's the answer. I think the answer is clean, local produce inspected by talented plastic sleuths that can find little particles of plastic in my red lettuce there. And I market it in wooden boxes from Acres of Books, recycled, and never sees a plastic bag, and it gets to over 100 customers every week in Long Beach. So I think we can do it. I may be taking a tack that's not what everyone wants to do, but it's my way of saying we can live plastic-free as a refusal to accept the consequences of a wasteful system that has not yet been developed in such a way that it returns the plastic to the productive apparatus. We get the idea in agriculture. We know we can compost, cradle-to-cradle, it's easy. The old food waste and the green waste goes into the compost, goes into the soil, we get the new plant. It's a perfect system around and around. We don't do that with our plastic. We don't have the plastic come back into the industrial system and make new plastic stuff out of it. So I think you can take the question mark off. This is our legacy to future generations, and it's time to say enough is enough, draw a line in the beach and say the plastic trash stops here, we're not letting it out. And we're beginning to do that with the structural controls, the covers to the catch basins. And now we need to do it with the design of our products. That's the next step. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council on this presentation?
Oh, and one last thing is, we all want to do something about it. So, you know, we get what's called biodegradable materials, bioplastics. This was a month in my compost pile thermal filling, just as strong as it was, didn't even eat the ink away. There's a lot, people are getting really sad about trying to do the right thing, buying these products and finding that they're phony. So we really do need standards, enforceable standards for these so-called biodegradable products.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And there's no questions.
Questions? Okay.
Okay.
Do we have any comments from the public on this presentation?
One last thing. Got to make a pitch for my new book, Plastic Ocean, published by Penguin Avery. And I've got some with me, but it goes on sale October 27th. You can get it, you know, wherever Amazon and like that. But it tells the story of how I discovered the eastern garbage patch and explores some of these issues around the difficulties in recycling plastic.
Thank you, sir.
I'll just be really quick. Stephanie Berger with her Three Source Foundation. I just want to say thank you for providing this presentation and congratulate you again for being leaders with the Styrofoam ban. We have gone out to many of the restaurants. I think there's maybe only eight that are still using Styrofoam, mainly Styrofoam cups. We had a little confusion with our interns because those nasty Dixie cups, hot cups, kind of confused people. They're not Styrofoam, but they're not environmentally friendly. So we'll be giving a report, and Mr. Moreland and his high school students are back again this year to work on plastic bag bans, which we'll talk about later. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hen and the rest of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner. I live in Newport Beach. And I don't know how you can look at that and not try to do something for the plastic problem. And I know you have on your city council agenda for tonight discussion about whether or not to research and take a look at banning plastic bags. We talked about this briefly once before, and I know we do use it, Mr. Hen, about for our dog waste, but I think there are some things that we can do. We can start in some small way somewhere. I just think it's a shame that we don't have the ban that other cities are doing for market plastic. We can take our own bags. I do that. I don't know enough about it to know exactly how those other cities do it, but I think that's the kind of research that it would be worth your time and energy. In fact, if you ask Stephanie, she probably has all the answers for you anyway. She could be your staff person. So I hope you will seriously consider looking at this issue of banning plastic as much as you can in Newport Beach. Thank you.
Any other comment? Okay, thank you very much.
I would just make the comment, you know, when you go in to some of the elementary school grades, you can see how kids are so advanced on electronics and how they're communicating and on some of these environmental issues. I mean, they're just really progressive. And I know with this program, there's a strong educational component. So thank you.
Okay. Next presentation?
Mr. Mayor and council members, this next item is a briefing that we give to you periodically when we update the master fee schedule. Today, we're not proposing that those be updated tonight, but we wanted to give you an early look at those when they, so if they come back, when they come back, you'll have a chance to be familiar with them. With that, Tracy McCraner.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to bring the year-two fee schedule to full council for the first time. My team and I actually did go to the finance committee in September for the initial presentation and got a little bit of feedback from them at that time. Like Dave said, this is just an overview of some of the significant changes for the four departments that were studied in year two. To my left is Evelyn Sen, I'm sorry, I'm Tracy McCraner, Finance Director. To my left is Evelyn Sen, the Revenue Manager, who has the direct oversight of the fee schedule and the cost allocation process. Coming with me are the other three directors of the departments that were chosen to be studied this year, in case you have any questions that I can't answer. What we'll cover tonight is, just give the background of the cost of services. What is the cost allocation process? What are its components? And then, the departments that were studied and the staff recommendations. Again, for just the more significant changes that we see, it's not an all-inclusive list, it's just the bigger items or the, and any new fees that we are recommending for discussion with the council. We are not asking for any approval. We're really just asking for feedback and comments at this time, and then what our next steps will be. The background is, on April 13th, 2010, council approved a six-year professional service agreement with our consultant, MGT of America. This was intended to give ample opportunity to our consultant, who had a good track record with the city, and break up the actual departments that were studied every year so that we could spend more detailed time thoroughly going through all of the fees and working with the departments on the process for making any recommended changes. It allowed for an opportunity for every department to be studied every three years, which was a little more frequent than they had been done in the past, and also to give us more time to come to council and have public discussion. The year-one cost plan was brought to council and approved on March 22nd. The departments that were studied in year one were Police and Harbor Resources, and the citywide cost allocation plan was also done in year one and will be done every three years. Now we're up for year two. The departments studied were my own, Finance, Library, Municipal Operations, which now includes General Services and Utilities, and then Recreation and Senior Services. And as I've mentioned, besides myself, we have the other three directors and staff here to accommodate any questions. Components of cost allocation, and I go through this with council but also for the public's benefit, are, the first part is direct salaries and benefits. This is where our consultant will meet with the departments that are selected for the year, and they identify all direct staff time spent on activities, and whether they're fee-related or they're non-fee-related. The next component is the indirect costs. This is departmental overhead. Within each of those departments, you have supervision, administration, that are the indirect salaries and benefits, and then you have indirect supplies and materials that are needed and allocable. There's also a citywide overhead, which is part of that citywide cost allocation process that we went through last year. This is for those internal service departments only, Finance, City Manager, City Attorney, Human Resources. Our departments exist to primarily serve the city departments. So the work that we do is allocated and calculated through the citywide cost allocation process. And then each department that is studied does get an allocation for those services. And an example within my own Finance Department, so I'm in charge of payroll for the city, so we do a cost allocation of all city departments based on payroll, number of employees. Then finally, the last component is direct materials and contracts. And just taking an example of one of our departments picked for this year, Recreation, some direct materials and contracts that are allocated to services are the contract instructors within Recreation for like fitness classes or dance classes, really sailing any kind of program that Recreation offers. And then some direct materials are the games or sporting equipment or participant uniforms that they'll need to provide for those programs. I'll go at a high level with the process. I can definitely spend detailed time on any one of these numbers. The important thing here is that we know that this process is followed regardless of the department. It's consistent, it's citywide, it doesn't change from department to department, which is what's important in looking at your cost of services for a city. So the first step is departmental salaries and benefits. They're looked at with the consultant and the departments to determine if they're a direct cost or an indirect cost. Then the department maintenance and operating expenses are looked at. They're either allocable or not. For instance, the contract fitness classes, those are allocable. Costs that are not allocable, for instance, in MOD would be street repair costs. Those aren't allocated to any fees. The overhead rates are then calculated. That's simply a formula of all of your indirect costs divided by your direct salaries and benefits. So it's a simple formula. You come up with a rate. We then apply those rates to hourly salary and benefit amounts to the individuals within the departments being studied. And again, those salary and benefit amounts have an internal overhead cost for the department as well as a citywide support cost. The consultant will work with the departments to gather the time estimates that reflect the average amount of time required to perform that fee or that program. They apply the hourly rates to those time estimates. They add any direct materials or contract costs that are eligible. And then the staff's full cost plus those direct materials and contract costs become the full cost of performing that service. That full-cost service is divided by the number of participants or the number of applications or whatever it is for the service to get the actual fee amount per cost. And then finally, municipal code 3.36, it states in there that it is the city's policy to be full-cost recovery. That means we recover all the costs for user fees. However, this council and previous council have determined that there's many fees that we want to subsidize as a city. For instance, Recreation and Library, part of what makes our city unique is the wonderful programs that we offer within those two departments. And it's this council and previous councils' determination that we do want to subsidize those costs so that we can increase participation and we can offer those types of programs to our community. And we will be going over those subsidies in a bit. Okay, I'm first up, Finance Department. Looking through all of our different fees, and again, this isn't an all-inclusive list, it's just the more significant changes. And I think then-Mayor Curry brought up last March, what are all these coin machine and penny arcade fees? There's actually 11 identified in the fee schedule. Well, when Evelyn and I were working with the consultant to look at that, these come from, you know, I don't know, 40 years ago, or I can't even remember how old they are. But at the time, the then-councils wanted to monitor and track anything that they considered public nuisances. There was a concern about nuts and confections that were being sold in vending machines because of health allergies or, you know, childhood allergies. A lot of these were, you know, this was at the amusement parks. And it was, at that time, something that the council wanted to track and charge for. Another thing that it was, they had like tattoos and mood rings, and they felt that maybe the video, okay, thank you, Dave, the video games were kind of a public nuisance. We don't charge these fees, so we're recommending deleting all 11 fees. We also have a $5 business license renewal processing fee. We're going to recommend deleting that. It takes more time for my staff to actually track and bill and mail these bills out than it's worth. We, just to give you an idea, we get annually about 16,000 of these business license renewals. So it's really not cost-effective to even charge this service, so we're going to recommend to council that we delete it. There's currently six vehicles There's currently six vehicle-for-hire fees. There's going to be some significant increases recommended by the police department, but I do want to qualify, this used to be for petty cabs and the Newport Cruiser that was in town. We haven't had a request for one of these fees for over two years, but we wanted to keep them on the books, and the police department said because of the extensive background checks that they have to do, it's pretty much doubling the fees as they are, but I don't think that will be a significant impact to the community, as we haven't had any for several years. A couple of new fees that I wanted to go over and kind of explain for the council and the public. And short-term lodging permit renewals. We currently don't charge for this service. We did a study. It takes almost as long to provide the service for the renewal as it does the initial application. We've traditionally not charged for it, but what we would like to discuss with council tonight is the potential to charge for that, as it is a full-cost recovery. Or come up with council, it's this council's decision if they want to subsidize it or not charge it at all. But I did want to bring to light that this is a cost. There's about 600 a year. Takes about three staff members, including the IT section. It's a very manual process, and that is the true cost. Owners, property owners are required to renew every two years if they want to keep up per the municipal code. So we would like to discuss that with council and the public to see if you would be interested in recovering the cost of that.
Tracy, do you have a question?
Sure. I just have a concern that we do have closed session and we have, I mean, some of these things are really worth a lot of discussion, it seems to me, if you want direction. And I don't know how we're going to get all that in. I don't want to just say, oh, everything's fine. I would really like to discuss some of these in detail, but, so I need some, a sense of what our timing might be or whether we can come back to this at another point or what.
We can, yes. If you prefer, we, I think there are worthy of talking about a little bit more, too, so maybe we can punt this one until next time as well and just pick it up where we left off.
Do you want me just to kind of go over it in general and then plan a longer period of time? I was supposed to go up at 5:30, so I'm sorry, council.
Yeah, I was hoping you'd go in the study session at 6:15, so three minutes.
Okay. Well, there we go. I can do that.
Well, I think with this one, though, the discussion at the finance committee, part of it was the short-term lodging permits. If there, if we could sort of, if there might be a bulk process for some of them, if we just have a, if it's really kind of dominated by just a handful of people renting these, you know, can those entities get some, it's not going to be $6 each. So there can be some economies as far as how they're being issued.
We did look into that, that was brought up as finance committee about bundling for the property owners. And of the 600 properties that come in, I have staff looking at how many of those, you know, how many owners do we have versus, so I will have that information to you for next. We could definitely do that, have a much smaller rate per property owner. The actual work involved is based on the actual property itself. It's the same amount of work whether you have one property or, I mean, it's the same amount of work for each property. So if you're one owner with one property and you're a different owner with 10, the owner with 10, it really does take almost 10 times as long because you have to do all the-
Why is that? What does he have to do? What do we do?
Let me see here. There's the correspondence with the owners. Our licensed inspectors go out to do the inspection and do the follow-up. The, there's annual reports and then the mailing out.
When we go out, somebody comes in and says, I've got a property, I have two, I have three properties here at, you know, 231 A, B, and C, Balboa Street. So we send out, every two years, we send an inspector out to make sure those addresses exist, or what do we do?
Every year, our inspectors go out and look at the properties we have on file to determine if they are still doing business, even if they're-
Well, if he applies for it, isn't that a presumption that they're doing business?
Well, no. If they apply for it, we wouldn't have to go out and inspect. Then that work would just be all the paperwork, data processing, mailings, and tracking.
Yeah. Well.
That's why I just feel like we need a lot of time on this.
Right, but this needs to come back, and we need to have the answers to this bundling question here about precisely what it is that we're doing and how it can be done more efficiently before we-
Okay. And another thing is because of our outdated systems, we have to do multiple data entry, you know, one to a customer database, another to a billing database, another to GIS. So unfortunately, it's just our reality with our current IT systems, but there would definitely be room for improvement if we can improve that.
Yeah, because we're, because we're making the public pay for just this gross inefficiency. If we can somehow make it work better.
I wouldn't say it was an inefficiency. It is our reality. Yeah. I think my staff's very efficient for what they have to work with. It's more of a resource issue, but you're right. They do have to pay for our outdated systems.
So what's our, what's our necessary timing on this subject?
We can certainly have it at study session next time and then with a proposal to adopt the meeting after that. We're just-
Okay. So we've got this. It'll be distributed in advance. I don't think we need to actually talk through every item, you know, on this. So I think council can select out of this what they want to ask questions about rather than try to go through the entire presentation.
Yeah, please feel free to let me know any in advance so I can, you know, I'll definitely have more information on bundling. And then we will have the full fee schedule for council at the next session so you can see the things I didn't go over, but pretty much this is all the significant changes we would be recommending. And we can come back on the 25th.
All right. Thanks, Tracy.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. Do we have public comments on closed session agenda items? That is, the agendas, items that are stated in the published agenda to be considered in closed session or any other item? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session.